Welcome. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on January 28, 2025, and ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Bray?
Present. So, tonight, we will begin with the invocation, and I believe Commissioner Smith's going to do that. And then, we have Boy Scouts Troop One is going to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, you guys can, we're going to do all this back-to-back, so you can come on up, and we'll let you stand up here and lead us in the pledge, right after Commissioner Smith does the prayer.
Father, we thank you for your grace and goodness. May your face continually shine upon us and our community, so that your ways may be known within our communities. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, boys. I don't know how much interaction people have had with Boy Scouts, but what a great program. The Eagle Scout program helps develop leadership at an early age, and we really appreciate you all being here tonight. Thank you. So, we have an introduction tonight. Amy, are you handling this one?
Going in.
Okay.
Tonight, I'd like to introduce you to the new general manager for the Paducah Sports Park, Chastity Heron, and she is going to kind of give you a little bit of background about her. As Amy said, my name is Chastity Heron. I actually go by Chas. I'm the new general manager for the Paducah Sports Park. I hail from Northwest Illinois, where I spent 24 years in the nonprofit world, and the last 17 as general manager of that. And then, a year and a half ago, I became the regional finance manager for Sports Facilities Company, who is the management company for the sports park. And as I was doing that, I saw this as a great opportunity to get back into the operations side. I did a lot in the finance world, but I really enjoyed being on the ground, and having a venue of my own was something that really drew me to this. I also have a food and beverage background, as my husband and I owned a catering business and barbecue business up in Northwest Illinois for 10 years. It's just he, myself, and our dog that moved here. We've got four boys and one grandchild back in Northwest Illinois. So, this also gave us the opportunity to get within a day's drive of home. So, with that, I'm really excited to get the park built and get going, and hopefully, this bad weather wasn't something that I brought along here.
I'm sure you didn't. Well, it's great to have you. It's absolutely, and on behalf of the whole community, welcome. You know, the whole community is very excited about the sports park. We can't wait to get it built. And maybe, just a question or two. Are you talking with any teams yet about, do you have, you know, dates certain yet, that where you can really start talking to people who are scheduling tournaments or anything?
With the complex being finished here the end of this year, and we won't start tournaments and stuff until spring of next year, we've got quite a leeway there that we are going to be able to get these tournaments in the process of booking here sooner than later. I was just, got back from the ABCA, which is the American Baseball Coaches Association, and we met there with rights holders, Perfect Game, U Trip, and a couple others who will be bringing their tournaments here to the park. So, those discussions have started, and we're just, you know, need to finalize some dates and get those on the calendar.
Okay. Anybody questions, thoughts?
Best wishes to you. We wish you lots of success. We're right there rooting for you.
Thank you. I'm excited.
Yeah, we got three or four hotels starting in anticipation, so no pressure, Chas.
Well, that's good, because I keep hearing that we need more hotel rooms.
Exactly.
I don't think, we're going to be that shiny new toy. So, that's what's going to make it really a great destination to come to.
Yep.
Chas, what's your timeline feeling about the rest of your team?
We are going to start posting here in March for the Director of Operations, so hopefully, we have them on board in April. And then, Business Development will be the next one that we will have. Don't exactly have a timeline on that one, because a lot of that I'll be able to handle right now. And the VP for our venue also, he's our baseball guru for Sports Facilities, so he's already got all those contacts with the rights holders.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, thanks. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to welcome Doug Hanley with Paducah Power System. Doug's going, one of the things that they're obligated to do is give us an overview of their annual audit, Paducah Power System, so Doug's going to talk about that tonight. And, you know, the city, the city of Paducah owns Paducah Power System, but they operate independently with an independent board. And, but lots of things that they do affect all the citizens. So, we're glad to have you, Doug. So, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. You did my introduction for me. We're here because we have a separate audit and a separate report, separate financials, but we're obligated to deliver that report to you to receive and file. So, that's, that's the real obligation that I have. But, well, I'd also like to get, give you a couple of highlights, primarily in the area of financial stability and control, and also talk a little bit about an additional revenue opportunity, and then, of course, ask you to receive and file the report. In the area of, am I doing this, or are you doing it?
I can if you need me to.
Does this do it, or that does it?
There we go.
Okay, those are some small numbers, and I'm not going to read all of these numbers, but kind of, the takeaway from this is, if you remember anything, it's 95%. All right, here's a comparison of our fiscal year '24 actual results compared to our fiscal year '24 budget. Total revenues came in at 95% of budget. Total expenses came in at 95% of budget. The net of those two came in at 95% of budget. Now, if any number looks kind of unusual, it might be the generation expense as a percent of budget that jumps out. And, in a way, that's really a good thing. Generation expense is related to the gas-fired peaking plant that we have here in Paducah. For budgeting purposes, we assume we don't run that, except just for the basic minimum maintenance run. But if conditions in the purchased power market warrant it, we'll run it and save money on purchased power. So, if we have a high generation expense, it's because we've run that unit a lot and saved money in purchase power expense, which, if you look at the comparison of purchased power to budget, it's, it's well below. If you take generation expense and purchase power expense and compare actual to budget, guess what? 95%. The other thing that might look a little off, and really, the only other two line items, T&amp;D expense and overhead expense, that's the local utility operations here. And one's a little higher than budget, one's a little lower than budget. Again, if you add those two together, guess what? 95%. So, I guess the message here is that, with respect to the actual operations compared to budget, we have pretty strong financial stability and control over our finances. But really, the bottom line, of course, what everybody wants to know is, and it's really a good metric of the efficiency and of an electric utility is the rates. So, if you look at what this graph, where it starts on the left is, what is the electric, monthly electric bill for a residential customer using 1,000 kilowatt-hours? And in January 2022, that was $157. So, that's where that graph starts. If you took that $157 and increased it by inflation since January 2022, it would be, through the end of 2024, it would be $177. So, it would have gone up by $20 a month. But what our actual rates have done, and this is not because of changes in the base rate, but because we haven't changed our base rate, it's the base rate plus the power cost adjustment. So, we have to pass through all of our costs of power on a real-time basis, basically. So, we've, we've been able to control that cost of power plus not have any base rate increases, so that the actual bill for a residential customer for 1,000 kilowatt-hours has gone down to $152. So, over that three-year period, our rates have gone down by $5, and we've basically beat inflation by 17%.
So, rates have gone down in actual, real dollars, $5?
Yep.
Okay.
And it's not inflation-adjusted, it's just the actual bill amounts have gone down $5. So, I think that gives you a pretty good picture of financial stability and control. That's, that's it for the financial reporting part of this presentation. I want to cover another highlight, and it's, it's an additional revenue source that you may have heard about, Bitcoin mining. It's, it's pretty new, and a lot of people are talking about it. And we've had some Bitcoin mining customers come to Paducah Power. And when they come, this is what they come in, a container. Come in, set the container down, and we plug them in, and they're off and running. What I want to talk about is how much revenue comes from the existing Bitcoin miners that we have right now, how much revenue may come from those existing customers in the future, and, you know, we may get more Bitcoin mining customers, too. So, this is what the inside of that container looks like. It's a bunch of computers on racks and shelves inside that container. And all these computers are consuming a lot of electricity and generating a lot of heat, so there's a lot of cooling fans and sometimes other kinds of air conditioning load that goes into keeping those computers cool. Now, from, from the electric utility perspective, we really like these guys. These are good customers. It's a concentrated load, all in one small space. You saw the size of that container. That's like a 1 megawatt, and I'll talk about what megawatts more here in a second. That's like a 1 megawatt load. So, it's concentrated. We don't have to string miles of, miles of line, put up lots of poles or anything like that. They usually locate close to a substation. It's a real simple connection. We can hook them up just like that. It's also a high-load factor customer. These computers are programmed to run algorithms, and they're just constantly running, nonstop, 24/7. And so, when you think of load factor, it's like, when they have a mega, 1 megawatt load, it goes to 1 megawatt, and it stays there. Any other customer, they might come to 1 megawatt during their on-peak time, but then, they have an off-peak period where they might drop to half that. And that would be, you know, a 50% load factor. But we have to build our facilities to serve that 1 megawatt, even though we're not selling that 1 megawatt around the clock. For these guys, we're selling that megawatt around the clock, so it makes it easier to recover our costs. Another characteristic of Bitcoin mining is it's almost completely interruptible. When these machines are running, they're running programs, and they're, they're part of a much bigger pool of miners everywhere, and they're just kind of throwing their, their chips in the ring, and they all kind of collect whatever's the result. But if we need them to, they can just shut off. They can drop down to almost nothing, just like that. And they're not making any money, but they're willing to do it for a limited amount of time in exchange for a very preferable rate from us. And we're willing to give them that preferable rate, because that interruptibility feature is very beneficial to us. It helps us control our risk. And I might talk some more about risk, too, here in a minute. So, that's another feature that electric utilities like to serve interruptible customers. And finally, it's, it's a low impact on the community. I mean, these are small spaces, small footprint, so you don't have, and they don't have employees, so you don't have a lot of parking issues, you don't have to build a parking lot, you don't have a lot of traffic in and out. There's really not a lot of noise. You know, some of the earlier ones had, had a noticeable amount, but the ones that they are doing now are liquid-cooled, and they don't generate near that fan noise. And you don't have a big issue of air quality for, because they're not burning anything or manufacturing anything. Now, you probably would like to have a larger impact on the community with employees and hotels and housing and all that, but for an energy play, this is real, this is a good energy play. So, let's talk about the energy sales. So, we have, right now, just three Bitcoin mining customers. And I want to talk about their size in terms of megawatts and their revenues in terms of energy sales. And I want to put it in the perspective of total energy sales for our PPS system for fiscal year '24, 525,000 megawatt-hours. And of that total system, our 10 largest customers constituted 21%, okay? In fiscal year '24, these three customers constituted 4% of that total energy sales. So, they, they were, not all of them, but a couple of them were in that top 10, and they contributed to that 21% during fiscal year '24. But that, that was, they were not in there at the full size for the full year. So, it wasn't a big percent. So, I have to show you what they're doing now. In fiscal year '25, year-to-date, those energy sales are already up to 107... 102,000, sorry. I have my glasses. I shouldn't have put them on. But that represents 19% of the fiscal year '24 energy sales, already, almost as much as the top 10 for that year combined, thus those three. If you take that and annualize that year-to-date to the, to the, what it would be in fiscal year '25 on an annualized basis, it's, it's 33%. Just from three customers, they, one and a half times what the top 10 combined were for fiscal year '24. So, it's a lot of energy, lot of energy sales. Those three customers, I nicknamed them 1, 2, and 3. There's small, medium, and large. Small is 1 megawatt, that's like that one container. The medium is 4 megawatts. That's like a hospital. The, the large one's 18, that's three or four hospitals. So, can we go to, you know, in terms of the financial impact, what we are trying to do is manage the risk, and so, there's a low margin here. Remember that container? Easy come, easy go. And this is a volatile technology and market, and these customers can be making a lot of money one day and losing their shirt the next, and get out of the business and just go. And so, we have to be prepared for that. We have to manage that risk. But the main thing that attracts them to us is a preferable rate. In order to offer them a preferable rate, we have to cut our margins. So, we basically are passing through the actual cost of the power that we purchase to serve them. It's, you know, we don't, we don't make anything, we don't lose anything on the power-cost component. That, that drives down the price to them as low as it can possibly be. But it doesn't put any risk on us. We don't have to promise them a rate, and then, when the market goes up, and we have to buy it for more than what we promised to sell it to them, we're not going to eat that loss. So, it's a risk management from that perspective. But we do make money on a margin from the distribution charge. Now, what we do with the distribution charge, so that we're not impacting our budget in a negative way, is we don't budget any revenues from these Bitcoin miners until it comes in. We don't budget it at all. We just recognize it when it comes in. And when it comes in, it's going to be split into two pieces. 10% is immediately going to go into the PCA calculation. So, that calculation is what sets the PCA for the next quarter. So, immediately, 10% of those revenues are going to help lower the rates for customers in the next quarter. The other 90% is going to go into a rate stabilization fund, which we will use to defees debt or pay capital expenditures, which will lower the rates over the long term. So, we don't rely on that revenue, so we don't have to worry about not meeting the budget because somebody up and left, and we don't, aren't getting any more revenue from them. And, but we are going to ultimately flow all those revenues into some form of rate reduction for customers. So, in summary, the audit report is done, the audit opinion is cleaned, our internal controls are spotless, financial condition is solid, it's stable, and we have some potential prospects for additional revenues that are pretty promising, and that will help keep and lower our rates to consumers. So, please receive and file this report.
This is a question. I know for a time, of course, when we went to Prairie State, we had overcapacity. We had purchased more energy than we could use. Where are we on that status? Should we still have some excess energy that we can market?
Yeah, in fact, we have a, and I say "we," it's Paducah and Princeton together have formed Kentucky Municipal Power Agency, which I'm CFO for that, and our accounting department is that accounting department. But, yeah, we, we have to sell all of the output of Prairie State into the But yeah, we have to sell all of the output of Prairie State into the MISO market at the, at the, at the market rate at the time that it's produced. And we have to buy all of the energy that we need from the market, MISO market, at the market rate at that time. So if we produce just as much as we needed, then our cost of power would be whatever it costs to produce energy from Prairie State. So it's, that's our long-term hedge on power prices. But most of the time, we produce more energy than we need. So it produces excess energy, and that excess energy is a revenue source. And if you, if you remember that chart where the actual cost dipped down, that's where we were able to really give back a lot more money, because what happened in the market was prices went really high. And when prices are high, the money, the revenue from selling that excess energy produces a lot of revenue, and we're able to pass that through and lower our PCA to customers. But we have a program at KMPA to, we call it hedging, to sell excess energy, and instead of just taking the market price, whatever it is, on a daily basis, we are looking for opportunities to lock in a price to sell a block of energy from the plant at better than what is in the market. So we'll sell, sell power, and then we'll buy power to serve that contract. And we've made, well, we make millions of dollars doing that.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
And, because I, just a quick update too, because I said I had a meeting set with Paducah Power last week, and super grateful for that opportunity to learn more about the organization. But for the community, could you just share more about the text usage alerts, the level billing and prepay options, just so they could, if?
It's really not my area.
Okay, okay, I got you.
But please go on the website, or call the CSRs, and they would love to tell you, anybody who wants to call.
And I covered it in a video and put it out online, but I just want the community to be aware, there is options to help with their bills and get text alerts to make sure that you're not overusing energy, so. And they just go to the website, like you said, and they can find all that info.
Yep. And the easiest thing is just to call the, call the general number, a customer service representative will answer, and they'd love to tell you all about it.
Awesome, thank you. I didn't have anything.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, first of all, yeah, I got a couple of comments. So on Bitcoin or cryptocurrency, you know, mining, you know, I think this commission went through a kind of an exercise a couple of years ago where a big Bitcoin mining company was going to buy one of our big facilities here, and so I kind of got into a lot of discussions, you know, with you all about that, what the impact would be to the city and the customers. And I think one of the concerns that people had, you know, these, you know, Bitcoin miners come in and use all this power, is it going to drive, you know, our other people's rates up? But I think it's clear, and Dave was explaining it to me at the time, the way that you're pricing it, you know, and allocating it, you know, it really actually helps rates, you know, in the long run. So we're using that, that opportunity, you know, with Bitcoin, and it doesn't look like Bitcoin's going away. Everybody's been predicting the demise of that for some time, you know, but I think it's here to stay. And so that's, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, a couple of things we do to ensure that they don't have a negative impact on customers, in addition to the plowing the revenues back into the power cost adjustment and rate stabilization. But when they come to us, we have a list of substations that have available capacity. And so they need to locate and connect to a substation that has existing capacity. That helps us too, because we now are using our capacity more efficiently. If they have, if they want to be larger than what we have available, they have to upgrade the substation. And all of the equipment it takes to connect to our system, they pay for. And they pay for in advance, and in some cases, they leave it to us if they leave. So we don't, we don't shell out anything upfront, so we don't have that risk that other customers would have to bear.
Yeah. I think my point was going to be that you guys have managed the opportunity with Bitcoin to our advantage. I mean, it's a, you know, it's a trend in the, in the world, the US, the world, you know, cryptocurrency, and you've used it, you know, to your advantage, so.
I just wanted to say, I serve on the Paducah Power Board as the city representative, and I really just want to say thank you to Doug and to the whole staff there at Paducah Power. It's a really well-run organization with a great team. And I know your employees were out on a Sunday not that long ago, really working hard, getting power restored to a lot of people, and I think that's just the commitment you have every day to, to this community, to make sure that people have power and they need it, either through what you're talking about, through helping with the budget billing and those type of things, or just being on the ground to provide that service. So thank you for everything y'all do.
Yep, thank you.
And just one more comment, you know, about economic development, you know. So I'm in conversations all the time, you know, with potential new employers that, you know, might want to locate here, you know, and power rates, you know, are always one of the, one of the most important inputs to their decision. So the way that you're managing rates in the long run, you know, through, you know, more efficiency and utilizing our opportunities to keep rates low, you know, is going to pay, I think is going to pay big dividends in the long run, you know, to keep us more competitive. And going back to the Prairie State thing, you know, that was, that was a big deal 10 years ago, when all that, when all that came up, and I know that Paducah Power assumed a lot of debt, you know, during that period of time, but you've managed it very well, so, you know, I'm very impressed with the progress that you guys have made.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I look forward to reading your audit report. I don't have any paper in my office, so. Okay, city manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, none this evening.
Okay, we have one person back there, Randall, if you want to step up and make some comments. You have, it's good to see you, you have three minutes?
I have three minutes.
Yes, sir.
All right. First off, thank you all so very much for your time and efforts. I'd especially like to say hello to the hardest-working person, Lindsay.
We agree. What do you want?
Blatant suck.
You're using your three minutes, Randall.
Okay, then I'll go right into it. I'd heard that a private developer had acquired the property of the old Forest Hills School Building, and my first question is, were there any stipulations made by the city to deal with positive forward progress concerning the condition of the building, whether it's mitigation of hazardous issues or possibly demolition of the building? Second question, Forest Hills doesn't really have a lot, so the only playground we have is what's at the old school. If there is a new owner of this, can we still utilize that property, or is it now off limits? Just some questions I'd like to have answered about it. Forest Hills is a, actually, Forest Hills is a big community. We're roughly 8% of the city's population. And on top of that, 150 children who call Paducah School System their education home live in Forest Hills and don't really have any play space, green space to utilize. So if you have any answers for that, I'm happy to patiently wait for you to put them out to the public. Thank you all very much.
Yeah, we'll follow up on that. I think those are all good questions, and we will definitely follow up on that. Thank you for being here, Randall.
Can I ask a question or make a statement on it? That's, that school building is owned by the school board, right?
Correct. It was.
Well, Randall is suggesting is that it's been sold.
Yeah. I guess what I'm saying is, the building has been in there for a couple of decades decaying, and it's been a real eyesore, and it's been a drag on that community.
Yes, sir, it has.
And I absolutely agree with you that it's, it needs to be addressed.
Thank you very much.
And so I just look to, I hope what the school board did was fashion it such a way that it is a benefit to that area, so.
That would be a great thing. Thank you so much.
I agree.
I thought Commissioner was asking if it was, if we had any obligation or to make, to answer the question in relationship to any conditions. We don't, since we didn't own it, we didn't have that.
No, we don't, we're kind of a.
Yeah, we didn't have the opportunity on that.
But that's a great comment about putting a playground out there too, if we could get a hold of some of that land. I think we have some land out there.
I thought we owned the old area, the city does, the Forest Hills area?
Yeah.
Forest Hills is the city development itself, yeah.
But the school was the property.
But that particular area, the school system owned. So maybe city manager could give us some follow-ups, that'd be great, so. Okay, Randall, thanks again for being here. We'll move to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There may no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The city clerk will read the items recommended for approval unless any commissioner would like an item removed for separate discussion. Hearing none, I will ask the city clerk to please read the items recommended for approval.
Approved minutes for the January 13th, 2025, special call meeting of the Board of Commissioners, receiving filed documents. Appointment of Chris Hudson to the Board of Ethics, said term shall expire February 10th, 2028. Reappointment of Catherine Kate Sen and Randy DeHart to the Commissioner of Waterworks, said term shall expire January 6th, 2029. Reappointment of Daryl P. to the Electric Plant Board, said term shall expire February 6th, 2029. Personnel actions, a municipal order authorizing and directing the city manager to initiate a request for proposals for a design-build project at Coleman Park Sprayground to include design, engineering, and construction. A municipal order amending the fiscal year 2024 through 2025 position and pay schedule for the full-time employees of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. A municipal order amending the fiscal year 2024 through 2025 job grade schedule for the employees of the City of Kentucky.
So moved. Second. Call roll.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray. Aye. Okay, we'll move to municipal orders. We have, looks like six tonight, but the first four are all related to the new sports park, and we've already allocated the money, and these are more of the specific projects that we have to approve individually, so. I'll ask the city clerk, please read the first one.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled, a municipal order approving the recommendation of the McCracken County Sports Tourism Commission to accept the bid package of Avanti Restaurant Solutions for food service equipment for the Paducah Sports Park Project in the amount of $663,892,892, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
So moved. Second. Jeff, welcome.
Thank you. It's been a while since I've been here, it's good to be back.
I bet you missed us.
I did. I know y'all miss me too. So this is for the food service equipment for the sports park. We did originally bid this with the original bid packages back in 2024, earlier in 2024, when everything came in, we had to go through a cost-reduction exercise. It was determined, and we only received one bid at that time as well, we decided to pull this, rebid it, the project scoped changed because we decided to remove the grandstand from the project, literally. And so this put a reduction in scope of the food service equipment, so this, what this is for, this is for buildings 3 and 4, for all food service equipment that will populate the concession areas. This is for full food prep, walk-in coolers, freezers, anything and everything you would need to run a concession stand for a sports park, is essentially in this, in these facilities. The concession stands are, as the project was bid, were exactly the same size, same equipments, essentially. There was a couple of minor differences, and then I think we're going through now and just kind of making sure that, that the equipment that is specified is what is needed, so, but this will cover any, any food service equipment for those two buildings, so.
Jeff, I understand you said that Avanti Restaurant Solutions was the only?
No, we had, we received one bid when it was originally bid, back in April. This time, we did receive two bids. The Stafford Smith was the, was the second low bid. This time around, they were the only bidder the first time, and then Avanti Restaurant Solutions was the low bidder this time by, I think, roughly $60,000. So, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll ask the city clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray. Aye. And I'll ask the city clerk to please read the second municipal order.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled, a municipal order adopting contract modification number one to the construction contract with Sprint Turf LLC for the construction of the championship field as part of the Paducah Sports Park Project in the amount of $772,492, and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract modification and all other documents related to same.
So moved.
Second. Vote's back on.
Yes, yes. These actions will literally turn the championship field back on in the project. Just have a couple of slides here, just for, for context. This is, you see the sketch on the right of the side of the slide, is showing, shows the, kind of the pink polygon up here that is labeled the championship field. During the cost-reduction exercises, we had to get to a certain threshold for, that the budget would allow. The championship field, removing that from the project was an easy way to eliminate some, some big dollars to get there, but the whole time, it was intended that it would come back. This was, having the championship field as part of sports facilities companies pro forma, that they need to operate the facility, so this was an important piece to bring back as soon as we could, and so this is what these actions are. So this first one is, is the field turf, the synthetic turf for the field, the, any of the drainage materials, both piping and subbase, concrete curbs around the field. This field is a full-size soccer field, so 240 feet by 360 feet, in addition to a full-size baseball field that will support high school baseball. So this is the, one of the larger fields out there, the larger surface areas of turf that we have in the, in the complex per field, and so, so this is just, this first action with Sprint Turf is just the synthetic turf and any associated work for that.
Questions? Okay, I'll ask the city clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye. So I'll ask the city clerk to read the next municipal order.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled, a municipal order adopting contract modification number one to the construction contract with A&amp;K Construction for the construction of the championship field as part of the Paducah Sports Park Project in the amount of $999,000, and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract modification and all other documents related to same.
So moved.
Second.
So this one is a little different than when we removed the championship field from the project, that we had one addition to this that was not included in the original bid documents, and that was, we're raising the field up about three feet from where we had it originally. When the grandstand was still part of the project, that floor elevation inside the grandstand dictated the entire site immediately around the grandstand, and And, you know, and therefore, the championship field level was dictated by the grandstand. Now that the grandstand is gone, we can raise that championship field up in elevation. So it is at the same elevation as the other four baseball fields immediately to the west of it. What this does for us, it does add some extra cost, but what it does is it eliminates a lot of change in elevation around that field. And with people walking around, you know, the older I get, the more careful I am with where I step, especially my wife, over the past six months, we've learned that the hard way. So, so we, we saw an opportunity here to bring that field up, eliminate any kind of trip hazards, changes in elevation. So this, this $999,000 does include the additional 20,000 cubic yards of fill plus all the fencing, dugout furnishings, dugout slabs, all the, the walls around the perimeter of the field for the, the primary home plate, poles, netting, foul poles, sunshades, foundation, and all of that. So this is, bleachers will be included in this as well. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Questions? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
And I'll ask the City Clerk to read the next municipal order.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled, a municipal order adopting contract modification number one to the construction contract with Musco Sports Lighting LLC for the construction of the championship field as part of the Paducah Sports Park Project in an amount of $165,525. And authorizing the mayor to execute the contract modification and all other documents related to same.
So moved.
Second.
Jeff.
This is the, all the athletic field lighting for the championship field. So all the, the, the large poles, the lights on top of those poles, LED lights for this particular field. So. And, and these numbers do reflect the, the, the numbers, you know, when we asked Musco and Sprint Turf and A&amp;K to, to remove these items from the project, there are no significant increases, if any increases, to those amounts when they were pulled out months ago. So they're not coming back with, hey, we need to raise our prices and trying to, to make up some difference. These are, they, good faith effort on their part to, to just put back in what was originally removed. So. Any, any questions on the lighting? I can try to shed some light on it.
Terrible joke. Please call roll. Hurry. Help us.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry.
I may have missed it, probably went over my head. But have we got anything put together for the Stuart Nelson section of the park? What that monument and all of that supposed to look like? Do we have any?
Yeah, we're, we're working on that. We, we had the original design concept that we presented a year and a half, two years ago to the community. That we, we did within the bid package itself, and what is going to be constructed as part of this is all of the infrastructure for that area. So all the sidewalks, concrete paving, seat walls, things like that, anything that's in the ground. What we, what we need to do next, and we've discussed it internally with, with the owner, with SFC and, and the design team, is how we engage the community on this next part to, to come up with what features, what, what story needs to be told for that area about the, the park, the history of the park, significance of the park, and, and the history and significance of Dr. Nelson himself. And so those, those discussions are happening internally, and we're trying to figure out the best way to do that and, and the timing of that to make that happen. So, so I do have an update. If you remember, the, there was a raised concrete platform out there at Stuart Nelson Park. It had a concrete balustrade or rail around three sides of it. It was out near the, the tee box for, I think, whole 18 of the disc golf course. That was successfully salvaged, the railing of that, which is what we had hoped to do in the project. We could not save the, the raised platform just because of the way it was built and, and its condition. But we were able to successfully salvage the rail and will intend to reuse those elements within the Stuart Nelson Memorial itself. So the contractor was out there last week when it was, I think, four degrees, and the, the ground was sufficiently frozen to go out there and remove those items with a lift. They are now stored on site and are with two-by-fours and two-by-eights, two-by-sixes are all braced and, and put together to where they're protected until they're ready for reuse. And we, we made sure the contractor understood the importance of that. I was out there freezing as well, making, I've got videos of the removal of some of those elements just for documentation purposes. So, so that was a successful thing that, that happened recently for the, for the part of the history of Stuart Nelson Park. So.
Jeff, do you, just want for the Commissioners, understanding that while we are talking about the championship field, what we have not discussed at this point is that entranceway.
Right. So, so this is, when, when the grandstand was removed from the project, we had to redesign this, this entry point to the park from the parking lot, between the championship field and the parking lot. We have created, we created this initial concept based off some meetings we had in the fall of 2024. We created this concept. This concept has been, has been vetted by the design team, the owner, Sports Facilities Company, is at several different levels from an operational standpoint, as well as just aesthetics and all of that. This concept was presented probably right before Christmas, I believe. And then we've gone through a, about as soon as we got this PowerPoint presentation put together, we've got, I think, just yesterday, we received back from our landscape architect partner some modifications to this. I wasn't able to get it in the, in the PowerPoint. And I didn't want to show it anyway because it hasn't been reviewed by the owner yet. So I didn't want to, you know, put it out there for the public to see before the owner saw it. So. But some minor modifications, nothing significant. And, and what you see here is, you know, we'll never replace the, the, the grandstand itself. You know, that was a.
Can you give us some bearing?
Yes, yes, sir. So, so this is, let me go back. So this is this area here. So the championship field is here, what you just proposed or voted to, to bring back into the project. So this entry plaza under design.
Where's the road from Park Avenue?
Right here. Yep. So this, right here at the bottom of the screen is, in this area is Chipwind, the backside of Chipwind, the backside of Watermark Honda as you come off of 32nd Street at the traffic light. So this is where you come in now and where the, the gates are, are there stopping people from coming onto the site. This is where that is. So, you know, initially, you would see the grandstand, and, and our hope was to renovate that and make it a, an interesting feature for the site and a useful feature. But just the cost was too high for that. So, so this is a, is an earthen berm that will go along the first base side of the championship field. This will be kind of a, about a six-foot-tall earthen berm. It'll have a split plaza in the middle here for, for photo opportunity and gatherings. As you come in off the parking lot, you will see, you'll kind of catch a glimpse through that earthen berm to the championship field. So that will draw you through that deeper into the park. We do have this rectangle in this area here is a large open-air pavilion that has two enclosed buildings, two smaller enclosed buildings on each end. One will be a restroom, a group of restrooms for public use. And the other side will be more mechanical and electrical areas for the site utilities that come in and interface into the park. And so we're, we're working through some concepts now. We have a designated area for food truck here on the west side in this area. We have a, a retail space for a pro shop or, or retail sales for the sports park down here at this west end of the berm. And, and I just ended the slideshow. So I hope you don't have any questions. Lindsay, can you, there you go. I knew you could do that. So. So we're just, we're going through, trying to make the best decisions we can. Our A&amp;K, the contractor, is working on some, some budget pricing for these elements so that we can make sure that we're, we're keeping this within budget. And then, and then we've got some other, we're still accumulating those numbers as we refine the design concept a little bit. But we hope to, within the next three to four weeks, bring this back to the, the bodies for approval at a conceptual level. And then once this concept design is approved, then we will go right into construction documents on this portion and get this to the contractor so that it can be incorporated into the project if, if approved.
Where exactly is the Stuart Nelson Memorial section going to be?
So it is, I don't even know if I've got a map big enough for that. So Commissioner Thomas, it is just to the west of these diamond fields here.
Oh, so it's not going to be in that.
Yeah, yeah. This, this portion represents the Bluegrass Downs portion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is just a, probably a, a third of the site that's visible on this map.
Okay.
There, there's a whole, the Stuart Nelson portion of the project has five full-size soccer fields, the Stuart Nelson Memorial, the disc golf course, picnic pavilion. It's, you know, kind of a public park. Not kind of. It is a public park with a sports facility integrated into it. So.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good. Okay. Thank you very much for being here, Jeff.
All right. Thank y'all.
Appreciate it. And the next municipal order is the long-awaited RFP release for the Catterjohn property. But I'll let the City Clerk, please read the, the municipal order.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing and directing the City Manager to initiate a request for proposals for the redevelopment of the Catterjohn property at 1501 Broadway.
So moved. Second. Josh?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, Madam City Clerk. So again, this is a big-ticket item that we have waited a long time for. So we request to release the request for proposals no later than February 7th and have them back by March the 12th. The site in itself for the RFP leans heavily into the housing component of the site simply because we need housing at all price points all across the city and in McCracken County. And there's two regulatory documents that is really driving that as well, which gives you all the authority to say, hey, we are wanting to lean toward housing on this. Number one, housing is a priority of this commission. And number two, the comprehensive plan, which y'all heard last night and is on the agenda tonight for adoption, the very first element of that, of course, is housing. The developers will have a wide range of opportunities to present their plan to this commission of their vision of the highest and best use of the property. They can do single-family, two-family, multifamily, perhaps commercial, and perhaps mixed use. It's wide open, but the intent of the RFP is to encourage creativity within that to see what all the options are for the piece of the property. A committee will be convened to evaluate the proposals that we receive, and they will make recommendations to you all on what they think would be best, what needs to be changed, and what would best suit the needs of the city and all the residents of the City of Paducah. The RFP will be gotten out to the public in a couple of different ways. We will use the city website. We will have press releases. And we'll, we will be contacting developers directly, especially those that have some, that is familiar with dealing with these types of projects and building in the City of Paducah. So with that, I would be glad to answer any questions that you all may have. Yes, sir.
Assuming there'll be a stipulation there that it's going to be keeping, keeping in the character of that, like the style of the homes, that sort of thing.
That is correct, Commissioner Smith. They will submit to you all as a commission architectural plans, along with a proposed site plan for you all to review in making those decisions.
Great. That's exciting.
Yes.
It's been a long time coming.
Yes, it has. It's great.
And I, I don't want to sound dumb asking the question, but, you know, affordable housing is a big thing. So how can the city make sure that these homes aren't just outrageously priced and are actually affordable for community members?
Sure. That will be one thing that they, when I say they, the developers, can put in their proposals as to how much is market rate, how much could be affordable housing, how much could be workforce housing, that type of thing. But ultimately, it's going to be up to you all as the commission to determine and work with the developer, hey, we want this much of whatever type of housing.
You know, new construction certainly is a challenge. You know, because it's, you know, as we all know, it's gone up in price. So this will be new construction. But I think, you know, what we're looking for is to, is to fit into the fabric of the neighborhood, not only with the way it looks, but also the pricing. You know, so, you know, we'll have, hopefully, we'll have some say-so over that. And, and the developers that are out there, you know, thinking about this, you know, will try to fit that in. But at the end of the day, you know, they, you know, there has to be a, there has to be a P and L for the people that are building, you know, building the, the homes, whatever they end up being. So.
Right.
But it would be the same kind of concept that we have at the Walter Jeter building because there, market rate, apartments there, there's low-rent apartments. All of that's in the Walter Jeter.
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
I don't think we're saying that it's going to be like one building, though, like that. It's just whatever they propose.
Yeah, I guess to Commissioner Thomas's point is that, you know, affordable housing would be a part of the whole thing, whether it's one big structure or whether it's houses or apartments. I think the bottom line is that everybody can live there, that we're not eliminating any particular people.
I think there will be a difference between the Walter Jeter, you know, if you're talking about the Dunlap project.
The Dunlap project.
That was a historical tax credit project. And so we'll just have to wait for the proposals to come in. But I anticipate there will be some differences, you know, between that and this new construction. That was a renovation project that used historical tax credits. And, you know, it was much, you know, much more complex than this. This is just a straight new build.
If it's a private developer, which is what you're seeking, right?
Correct.
I mean, I'm sure it's, it's up to them what they propose for that.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's up to them to what they propose. I guess the question is, since we're going to be the final say-so, can we not say we'd like to see, can we not go to that developer and say, this is what we'd like to see? This is what we want to see, as opposed to, this is it, and then we just grab and say, go with it?
I think we can put out the, the RFP, see what people, you know, what they, you know, what, what they submit. And then we can engage them in discussion about, you know, all the commission will be involved. It's very, very important to this commission that we do it right. So we'll be involved for sure.
Yeah, I mean, there is, just because the RFP goes out, the ultimate decision of you moving forward or not will rest with this body. And whether or not to, to engage with the developer, that'll be the choice of, of you as the five elected officials.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you, Josh. City Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
Okay, I'll ask the City Clerk to please read the last municipal order.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing and approving an agreement between the City of Paducah and Beautiful Paducah Incorporated for Barbecue on the River 2025 in an amount of $65,000, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Hello.
Hi, how are you guys?
Yeah.
Hi, good.
Thanks for having me today. Hold on, let me adjust this a little bit. All right, guys. I'm here to kind of go over our results from 2024. So for those I haven't had the pleasure of meeting and those tuning in, my name is Whitney Ruffelat Wallace. I'm the co-founder and executive director of Beautiful Paducah. I'm here today on behalf of both Beautiful Paducah and the Barbecue Planning Committee, and I want to. and I want to begin by thanking each of you for your continued support and partnership with us. By doing so, you all ensure that Barbecue on the River continues to exist for our community and hopefully for many generations to come. We are proud to formally announce that the numbers are in and the totals have been determined for the charitable contributions made from Barbecue on the River 2024. $319,387.82 were raised for our local and regional charities and nonprofit organizations at Barbecue on the River 2024. With 2022's festival being Beautiful Paducah's first year as the hosting organization, this brings Barbecue on the River's three-year fundraising total to $1,035,644.53. So, super proud, we kind of broke that threshold of the $1 million this year.
Congratulations.
Thanks, thanks to all of our nonprofits that made that happen as well. So the funds received from the city of Paducah were absolutely critical for the survival and continuation of the festival in 2024. Annually, Barbecue on the River cost our organization upwards of $200,000 to host. Included in the Barbecue on the River recap and update packets you are provided this evening, you will see the allocation of the city funds for last year's festival. The money we received from the city helped pay for a portion of our festival infrastructure and utilities, our paid volunteer labor program for nonprofit organizations that provide key festival operational services, public security, and free public seating, entertainment, and additional maps for our Visitors Bureau to disperse during the event. It is important to note that for the past three years, Barbecue on the River has had to contend with location and infrastructural obstacles due to two major downtown construction and development projects. In terms of temporary infrastructure alone, meaning plumbing, power, fencing, barricades, public restrooms, et cetera, our organization has spent over $100,000 in just three years' time. Until Barbecue on the River has a permanent home with adequate infrastructure, we anticipate to continue facing these financial strains, but we do so with utmost optimism, and we are honored to be afforded the privilege of taking this responsibility on for our community. Again, we want to thank you all for your continued support and partnership, and we look forward to bringing you the 31st Annual Barbecue on the River the September 25th through 27th. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll answer those.
I just have one, I guess with the project going on downtown, is it moving back to the parking lot area like it was years past?
So, yes, it should be included, I believe, a press release where we kind of have stated that. I wasn't gonna as much publicly announce that because once we, it's okay, it's okay, since you asked. We are gonna release that after this meeting, we wanted you guys to be able to read that first, and then we're gonna move forward with announcing that to the public, but yes. So now that the bill grant has taken off, we will be shifting kind of to its original location. It will be a little bit different, seeing that the parking lot's configured a little differently now, and so, yeah, we're excited about that, so it's just gonna take us a little time to kind of work through those, we just kind of got the green light that the gravel part of the parking lot is now back in the city possession, so we've got a lot of coming up with how we're gonna lay that out now there's no power on that side, so we've still got some stuff to work through, but we feel really confident about it, yeah.
But future, as soon as the riverfront development project is completed, then the idea is part of the public space on the riverfront side is being developed with events like Barbecue on the River to move down there and be, take advantage of that new development?
So, yes, kind of even the return to home is projected to be temporary because we're hoping to move it back to where it kind of has been, and kind of supporting what he says, that the new location that will be built by the bill grant will be its permanent home, so, yeah.
I have to say, I've had the pleasure of working with Whitney and with Tyler and their whole team for several years now, since 2022, on special event permits, and if I can say anything about them, you all are flexible.
Thank you.
And you are creative, and we appreciate you all really working as the transitions have had to happen each year to just keep bringing this back for the community.
Listen, we won't know what to do when it does have a permanent home. And we don't have to do. Yeah, it will be waiting for something to change and shift, so.
We'll throw something else at you.
Yeah, absolutely. That would feel right, so, all right. Do you guys have any more questions or anything I can help you with?
Questions, anybody?
I just, just so I understand, this is the breakdown of $75,000 which we gave to support it last year.
Yes, sir.
And this is, is it $35,000, did I read that right?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five thousand, and it'll be split into two separate payments, one before and one after the event.
Okay, so just, so we've got seventy, just going from last year, $75,000, and then what's not listed here, which you wouldn't list, is there's a lot of, there's other expense too that the city provides, like overtime, the waste, that sort of thing, so just, the main reason I'm saying that is I want people to know that this is a substantial investment the city makes for this festival, and it brings a lot of people in, and it is something people can attend. Basically, the city's helping to fund it, but there's a lot of, it's a community thing, so it's just another example of the services that the city provides for the larger community, not just city residents, so.
Absolutely, yeah, as you say, the city beyond just kind of, you know, the financial side of assisting us with the financial burden, there is a lot of services that go into it, city services that go into making this thing happen, and so, yeah, it is something that we're kind of hoping this year, we're going to be approaching Murray State, their business department, because we're hoping that we can possibly get someone from their graduate or their MBA program to look about doing kind of like an economic study for us, impact, kind of check, because that's something we've discussed many times in meetings, so we have a better idea of the charitable contributions, but we don't have an idea of, you know, how many, how much is being made through hotels, and, you know, how many people are traveling and filling up the gas stations. In 2023, we were able to find out that 10,000 of the attendees were coming from the mall area, so that's kind of our goal, is to get a little bit more data and information to share with you guys and the community, just how much Barbecue on the River really does impact the community, so. Those are goals, we'll see if we can find someone to do that, so.
Sounds like a good challenge for someone trying to do a study, like a student.
That's what we thought, so, you know, to make it affordable, because it's a little bit outside of our price range, any other way, we actually met, it would have been two or three weeks ago, with the executive team, leadership team with Memphis and May, and so, yeah, one of the guys that's head over operations suggested that, they've done that on several occasions, is approach a local university, get some of their graduate students to kind of take that on, to get some data and information, to help use that for, not only for you guys, but for assisting with sponsorships and different things like that, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Smart.
Yeah, so we're gonna give Murray State a trial on that, so.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Whitney, for being here.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
City Clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, we have two ordinances to adopt, the first one is one we read two weeks ago on street closure, and I'll ask the city clerk to please read it.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled an ordinance providing for the closing of 33,722 square feet of Vermont Street between 124 and 169 Nolan Avenue and 100 and 137 Vermont Street and 125 Ridgeview Street, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The city of Paducah does hereby authorize the closure of 33,722 square feet of Vermont Street between 124 and 169 Nolan Avenue, 100 and 137 Vermont Street, and 125 Ridgeview Street, and authorizes, empowers, and directs the mayor to execute quickclaim deeds from the city of Paducah to the property owners and/or abutting the public way to be closed and all other necessary documents to effectuate the closure.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on this one, anyone? Okay, I'll ask the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
And the final ordinance to adopt was the one we introduced last night at the joint city-county meeting, and that is the city of Paducah-McCracken County Comprehensive Plan, and I'll ask the city clerk to please read it.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled an ordinance adopting the city of Paducah-McCracken County Joint Comprehensive Plan pursuant to KRS 100.193. This ordinance is summarized as follows: This ordinance adopts the city of Paducah-McCracken County Comprehensive Plan and Statement of Goals and Objectives Recommended and Adopted by the Paducah Planning Commission pursuant to the provisions of KRS 100.193. The plan shall serve as the official guide for land use, development, infrastructure, and public policy decisions within the jurisdictional areas of the city of Paducah.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions from the comprehensive plan from last night? We, everybody good. I would just point out that Josh, earlier, when he was talking about the Catterjohn property, you know, he referenced the comprehensive plan, and I think that's an example of how we'll utilize the comprehensive plan from time to time when we have to make decisions. It's not something, as our consultant said last night, it's not something that we'll take home and read and memorize, but it's something that we will always refer back to, and it's an every-five-year process, so things will change over time, but, you know, it's good to have that in place. So, city clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, we have one discussion item, it's a big one on the agenda for tonight, and that's Main Street, and I will let Assistant City Manager Smolin introduce the subject and our guest.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, and City Clerk. I am willing to bet my face is not the one you thought you would see up here kicking off our Main Street discussion. Our planning director, Carol Galtz, fantastic, she has been working with our, one of our Main Street board members, David Wilkins, on this initiative. Carol wishes she could be here, she can't be here tonight, unfortunately, so I'm gonna go ahead and get us started before turning it over to David to talk about the great work him and Carol have been doing with the community. So you may remember in October, Carol and David came before the Board of Commissioners, and they got your approval to have community meetings and stakeholder conversations to kind of present this idea of restructuring Main Street and have a discussion around whether or not it should remain a city-run entity or transition to a nonprofit organization. So they have three very well-attended community meetings in November and December, so what we're here today to do is to present to you those findings and talk about a proposal moving forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to David.
Thanks, Michelle, and welcome, David, thanks for being here.
Thank you, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk about this again, and I've talked to all of you about this in some degree, or you've been to some of our sessions, and so, you know, we had three listening sessions back in the November-December timeframe, and then we've met with many stakeholders and many of the business owners, and many of our business owners are here tonight, showing support for what we're gonna talk about a little bit today. Really wish Carol was here, but, you know, Carol, being a prior Main Street director, has great perspective on this and sort of knows what has worked and what hasn't worked in the past, and has been very instrumental in helping guide us through some of the thoughts that we've put together here. So let me make sure I understand how to hit buttons. Okay, so what we're gonna talk about is really a proposal to privatize the Main Street program, and talk a little bit about why that's important, what are we actually talking about in terms of the vision of what we would really like to see Main Street be in the long term, and then how we would do it, and then a little bit about the process to go about doing this process. So, you know, a little bit about the background, most of you know this, but, you know, for some of those watching online, you know, the National Main Street program really began in the 70s, and, you know, it's been an extremely successful program throughout the country. It was really in direct results of what the evolution of changes that was happening in America, where small towns were being, you know, depopulated by people moving out into suburban areas and that type of thing. Kentucky was actually one of the leaders nationally in creating Main Street programs, and in the 80s, Kentucky created a statewide Main Street program that's part of the Department of Commerce today and still runs, and then Paducah joined in that program in 89, and creating the first Main Street program for Paducah. And that program was very successful in the initial years, and, you know, many of y'all were here and know some of the changes that that program helped launch and sort of bring in new vitality to the downtown areas. And then in 2008, the decision was made by this commission to move the Main Street program back into the function of the city government, and there was a lot of reasons to do that, but there were some incentives at the state level at the time, and there was a really big initiative that the city was focusing on, which was called Renaissance, which, you know, all y'all remember, that was sort of combined to really help the Main Street area and the lower-town redevelopment efforts. And so those projects happened, obviously, those were some of the more successful projects, you know, in the Main Street area in those years. But over the years, since that program ended and Main Street's continued to stay as a function of the city, some of the energy has dissipated in the program. We've had some funding reduced, we've had a lot of turnover in terms of some of the leaders and staffing in the program, competing with other city priorities, obviously then affected staffing, and thus what was happening, particularly around promotions and festivals, we've had a reduction of a number of activities downtown, and people are seeing that. And so, you know, particularly, it hits downtown businesses, it hits the economic development types of activities going on when there's just not as much energy and buzz going on in the downtown area. So what we really think seems to be right is really start thinking about a different vision for Main Street. And what was sort of interesting as we were going through the discussions and listening sessions with people, everybody remembers the 60s and 70s and how exciting downtown was back then, it was the retail hub of the city, and a lot of people said, we want that again, you know, and, but that's probably never coming back, or it's not probably, it's not coming back, you know, the evolution has changed. But what it can happen and what can get created is really to be an epicenter, you know, for community activities, festivals, gatherings, and you're seeing that happening around the country, and it becomes, we have the unique riverfront and Broadway, which is just the envy of most communities around the country, and so we're, it's a unique tourism magnet for people to come to Paducah. And so if we can continue to expand our unique retail businesses, our restaurants and bars, which are, you know, Paducah-owned, local business-owned types of businesses, which creates the real personality of Paducah, and so we've just gotta double down and try to create that. And then what you're seeing across the country, particularly with younger people in their 20s and 30s, you know, people want to live in the urban area again, you know, completely opposite of what happened in the 60s and 70s, everybody wanted to move out to the suburbs. But, you know, the younger generation particularly, you know, wants to have that environment, so the downtown of the future for Paducah is really gonna be a living environment, a community environment, you know, integrated with festivals, activities, you know, locally-owned bars and restaurants and businesses that all together, you know, make it truly, you know, one of the better small towns in America. It, of course, then drive our tax base, you know, we should be able to, you know, get some growth there, and then continue to be able to reinvest. So that vision really fits perfectly with the Main Street objectives, and the Main Street objective is focus on economic vitality, focus on promoting events and activities to bring people to the town, at the same time, you know, double down on preservation, don't let us lose what we have, the uniqueness of our buildings and the history that we have, and basically get this to be volunteer and Paducah-driven, so that the people of Paducah are integrated into this activity. And if you remember the last time I talked about it, that was my number-one concern, is is there enough interest, you know, in Paducah that people will volunteer and step up to these things? And, you know, coming out of these sessions, I just thought it was magnificent, we had over 80 people sign up that wanted to be volunteers, just who came to the listening sessions. We've had people volunteered to, for some of the positions that we're thinking we're gonna have to hire, so we're getting a lot of interest in people wanting to participate in making this happen. So what are we talking about in terms of what is it, what are we trying to make happen? We're saying it would be a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, we would establish it with an independent board that would oversee this organization, this organization would focus on those four pillars that I mentioned earlier, economic vitality, promoting events and activities downtown, preserving, you know, the historical, you know, functions of downtown, and then organizing people and raising money. It's gotta be, so it's gonna be a board that really- It's gotta be, so it's gonna be a board that really has a big raising-money component, because it's gonna take a lot of money to make this work. So if we're gonna go through this change, we shouldn't just take the existing functions in the city and move them to the nonprofit. So we're saying, you know, we need to hire three staff, we need to hire a director, someone in charge of events and promotions, and then someone in charge of sort of the office that we wanna set up. And we wanna set up an office downtown, so we have a physical presence, so when people come to Paducah, they can come here and they can see, you know, what's going on, they can understand the calendar of events, activities, they can go in and say, "Okay, let's talk about the empty buildings that we have, you know, what would you like to potentially invest in," you know, that type of thing. So have literally hands-on, you know, interactions with people who would be interested in those kinds of activities. We would have 10 big events, but we'd probably have anywhere 20 to 30 events, you know, once we, you know, fully load this up, almost every, something every weekend, you know, from May through Christmas, you know, except for, you know, maybe January and February, maybe not as much. But we would definitely put a whole calendar of events. And the big issue with this, the difference of this program is the economic development focus. So what we wanna do is have somebody focusing on this, they would out, they'd actually be recruiting businesses to come to Paducah, look at other small towns that have successful mom-and-pop, you know, so proprietor types organizations may wanna come here, people in Paducah who would maybe wanna be entrepreneurial and start their own business, you know, we would actually help them get set up and get organized, and then really push on these buildings to get these, you know, Broadway has 25 empty buildings right now, or something like that, give or take a few. What you see right now in the marketplace is people wanna buy buildings in Paducah, but they want them all done, you know? And what we have is a bunch of buildings that gotta be renovated. So we've gotta turn the corner here and, you know, get some of this renovation. So we have to be smart about how to do that. Maybe we have to do some of this on the front end, look for some potential funding to get some renovations being done with the expectation that somebody'd wanna come in, maybe we do some angel funding, you know, types of activities, look at, look more aggressively at grants. So there's a lot of different things we could do to really push the economic development stuff. But the fundraising and volunteerism are the key. The events and the activities of the events really ought to be all self-funded. So, you know, and we can self-fund those, we can go expend money to get some money to organize an event, you may have to pay for bands and people who are gonna be part of an event early on before they come, but recoup that money, you know? So we'd have to finance some of the deals to make those work. But that'll be a key to making that all work. In the timeline, these things are always hard, and you could drag this thing out for two years easily, you know, if you wanted to, in terms of doing a transition. The problem is, we've got summer coming up right now, and so we don't wanna miss this year in terms of getting more events and activities going downtown. So we really need to start now in terms of doing a transition. The city has the reality of the budget year and how much money is available and that kind of thing. So, you know, we probably gotta have a phased process where, you know, we start some things literally in the next couple months, get them going, and then by the time the new year starts in July, you know, we could have most of it figured out. What you have here on this list is we talk about, you know, repealing the existing ordinance in the month of February, we'd probably be working out the budget of what, of the overall scope of what the city can provide to the organization. The theory is, in the first year, you guys are pretty much funding the thing, and we'll create some fundraising activities to offset some of the costs, and then basically every year you reduce your funding as we create more and more self-funding in that. So we've gotta work that out. We haven't raised the money, so we don't know, you know, how much we can raise, but I think we can easily raise, easily. I think we can raise $50,000 this year alone, and I would expect we should be able to double that next year. And then I don't know where we go from there, depending on what kind of events and what kind of participation. But you see what, in the list of activities here, you know, we're recommending, you know, let's get, launch this nonprofit in the March timeframe. We have to launch it, we have to sort of have your support so that we can hire the staff. And those three positions that I was talking about earlier, we wanna pay well for those positions, we want very high-quality people that we can get into the organization. But they need to know that, you know, this thing is a go, and that, you know, we're gonna be able to move forward on this. We've also talked about hiring a consultant to come in to do some reviews of the economic development issues, really to focus on our couple big issues. You know, we've got a couple big buildings downtown that are setting, you know, those are some albatrosses that we gotta deal with. So we need to come up with some strategies of how to market those more effectively and what kind of incentives we wanna put together to address that and get that back to you guys and figuring out how to integrate those recommendations into our strategy. So we're saying do that here in the next couple months, all with the goal of then maybe we open the new office downtown as the new year starts, and then we'd have a contract in place with the new nonprofit at that point to go forward. Now, I talked real fast, and that's pretty hard for a southern guy to talk that, but I kinda wanted to push through some of that. But let me just stop there and take a breath and, you know, any questions that y'all have?
Just really a comment, and that is, we've done a lot through the years to get downtown promoted and all, and I really think that the time is right to make a concerted investment, basically a big investment, where we've got people, I think that we could get downtown pushed back over so it's got a little more commercial base, more stores down there, more interesting, you know, more interesting reasons to come downtown versus, I'm not denigrating going out to eat, 'cause that's a great, downtown's great for that, but there's other reasons to go downtown too, and I think making it more interesting with more stores and things like that is a great way to do it. And I think I like this because it really, it's a big commitment, but it also has a big payoff with these buildings which are falling down, some of them need work, but also it, for the selfish part of the city, it raises the value of the tax base and all that, and you got more people living downtown, and I just, I think it would be, really be good to push downtown over the hump.
Let me preface my statement by saying that I certainly do think this is a good move, it's a good idea, but at some point, I guess I have three questions in one. What would your annual budget be? How much would you want from the city? And then as we decrease, how much, what percentage would we increase every year?
Well, in terms of, yeah, the budget, we would think we need to obviously expend the amount that you spend a day with a percent more. It depends on what you guys agree you wanna do. If you, if you really, the document I included in the packet really has a very detailed plan of the transition and all the different line items of activities. But assuming you wanted to do all those things, it would cost some more, and we'd have to kind of work through some of that. It's not dramatically more, you know? And I do think that, you know, we can self-fund some of it here in 2025, you know, and I threw out the $50,000 number, so I'm thinking that that's what we would try to do, you know, in the first year. And then the second year, we would drop that to another 50. Ideally, over a five-year timeframe, you'd like the city to fund 25%. That, I mean, that's in my mind, if you look at successful public-private non-partnerships, because that way the city is not completely the driving funder anymore. Now, can we get to that? I don't know. You know, if you look across the state of Kentucky, the entity, I mean, they're all over the place. You got some communities where they only fund 25%, you've got some communities that are 70, 80%, you know, and they've been that way for years and years. You got some places like Bardstown, which is very unique, they don't really need any money from their city. So, you know, everybody's a little different in terms of, you know, how they're funded. But I think that's the go, but, you know, sure, we can't commit that until we start seeing that. And a lot of it's gonna be about the events, and it's a lot of it, once again, it gets around to the people. If we can find the real aggressive marketers who can put together some of these events that are very successful and raise a lot of money through those, then, you know, that's gonna be a, you know, we need several barbecue-in-the-river kind of events every year.
David, how do you see the economic development component working? You know, as you said, we have a lot of buildings downtown, we have the US Bank building now, which is, I believe, totally empty, but just don't see how we can leave that standing there for a long period of time. How could the city and this organization work more closely together? And honestly, I'm kinda talking about for our priority meeting, I really wanna push that, that we can't let that building sit there, and really the others, either people buy them and then they don't do anything with them. How could we work together to make sure that's not happening anymore? And, you know, would this person work with Greater Paducah Economic Development? Who would they be working with, with the city, to make sure that we're all aligned on what we would wanna see for economic development in those buildings?
Right. Yeah. The answer is yes, we wanna try to do a lot of that. But it's a new role, so in today's Main Street that we have, we don't really focus that much on economic development, maybe we return some mail that comes our way. So this new person who would be our lead person, economic development would be their number-one priority, because we'd also have a person that does events and promotions. So that person would sort of drive those activities, the lead would focus on the economic development. So it's a couple things. One is, we need to put some packages together that we can market to communities, market to big developers. That's, you know, we'd have to come to this commission, talk about how to package incentive packages that are creative, and very similar to what Jeep Ed does, you know, where, you know, in their area, we would try to do the same thing, you know, for developers who like to do, you know, renovation kind of work, you know, city, intercity kind of development. We also have to go after these recruiting of more small-business-type organizations. And so, you know, as we know how retail has evolved now, and, you know, everybody can buy everything off Amazon, you know, the retails that survive are the unique, you know, things that are unique to the culture of those communities. And so, and we've even proven that in Paducah, I mean, the one, we've got some very successful ones downtown that do exactly that. So there are organizations that are making that happen, that we can both recruit and try to find some more. But we also gotta take a pulse on what type of ordinances or processes we need to put in place to draw, to influence behavior. So you nailed it on the head on that point about, too many people own buildings downtown and are sitting on them, right? There are communities that don't allow that to happen, because there's other processes they put in place. And leaving a building empty like that has issues, you know, it takes on risk for the community. So, you know, we need to deal with that. Maybe sometimes we gotta spend money on the fronts of some of those buildings if they're gonna stay empty to, you know, put some more personality to our downtown, and there's a cost, and developer, I mean, the owners may have to help participate in that. But some of that requires ordinances, some of it could be finessed, and that's why you need to have somebody, you don't wanna sit there and do very Gestapo-like changes, you know, in ordinances to do crazy behaviors, but you gotta look at each one of them sort of individually and, you know, what can we do differently? So that's why we need a person, I'm kinda rambling, but, you know, it's a complicated answer that will take a while to sort out.
More questions? Comments?
We had a good meeting. I think I told you I was gonna ask you a really tough question up right now, what I was gonna ask you. But I hope I covered it, I hope I covered it just then, it was about the focus of filling up the buildings with businesses, so.
Yeah.
I just feel like an aggressive may not be the right word, but we have to be more diligent, more focused, more intentional on trying to fill up those buildings, especially when you have a big one like the US Bank building.
But I really think we can, and, you know, I'm speaking from a guy who came to town and saw the opportunity myself, so I personally, you know, have invested in downtown. And I personally, I thought I saw a lot of energy before COVID, and COVID sort of hit us and slowed down some of that. But, you know, I think from a developer's perspective, it's a great opportunity, and, you know, there's great properties to invest in, and if they see that, oh, wow, a lot of people are gonna be moving down here, they're gonna be driving all these events, that just makes the economics work for a developer, you know? So, you know, we just gotta put that together and tell that story, and, you know, and I think things will happen.
Thank you for all the work that you're doing. Thank you for your investment in downtown, 'cause it's beautiful, and then thank you for the work on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we'll be, we'll be working with David on a budget proposal, we'll all be talking about that, and I'm sure we'll talk about the US Bank building and other things, you know, when we get together for our retreat, you know, and talk about priorities for the next year. So got some big decisions to make here, that's for sure. So I think leadership, as Dave and I have talked, leadership's very important, whoever's gonna be leading the organization, the board, the board's very important, you know, the right people, engagement, you know, a couple of critical aspects to, you know, getting that organization off the ground. So, but we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
And we'll continue to work through it. Okay, thank you. Okay, City Manager, any comments?
None this evening, Mayor.
Comments from Commissioners?
I'll just say one thing, me and Commissioner Henderson went to KLC City Officials Academy a few weeks ago, and I just wanted to say it was an awesome experience, we learned a lot, like, they cover a lot of good stuff for elected officials, and there was over 400 mayors, commissioners, and councilmen from across Kentucky there, and it was an awesome time, and we learned a lot from that, so.
Yeah, didn't, y'all got those fancy pens?
I don't wear, I didn't wear mine today.
You didn't wear, but y'all been wearing them, and I saw J.D. Chaney, and I told him, the three of us were feeling extremely left out because we didn't have those, and he told me to remind him he would send us one.
Well, Commissioner Wilson, when you, when you talk to him again, ask him to send me one, 'cause I never got one.
They gave them when they came to Paducah at WKCT.
Well, you should have them, and I just, I think that we should have them.
Lot of sensitivity, lots of sensitivity here around here.
I have just one question, comment. I know that we've had some weather with ice and all that, it's created a lot of debris come down people's yards, but there are, and slowed down our Public Works Department, but there's a lot of Christmas trees still out on curbs, that sort of thing, so I'm hoping that they can, leaves, bags of leaves, that sort of thing, I'm hoping they can get caught up.
Okay. Commissioner Henderson, anything?
I have no comments tonight.
Okay. All righty, we do have an executive session, and I'll ask the city clerk to please read the motion.
I propose motion of the Board of Commissioners to go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics: future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate as permitted by KRS 61.810, subsection 1B.
So moved? Second.
Call roll?
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. And we do not expect to take any action.
I guess I'm gonna say. I don't need the second one, sign two.
Write it down.
Okay.